Well, it's 6:00 PM. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For purposes of attendance, please note commissioners present are Hench, Wade, Townsend, Elliott, Craig, Quellhorst. And if Commissioner Padron arrives, I will announce her presence for the minutes' purposes. Next item on the agenda is any public discussion of an item not on the agenda. So if there's a member of the public present who'd like to address the commission on an item not on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity. If you'd like to, just come up forward to the podium. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll go on to the next item. First thing up is rezoning items. This is case number REZ23-0010. The location is 1810, 1816, and 1828 Lower Muscatine Road. This is an application for a rezoning of approximately 6.1 acres of property from neighborhood public to general industrial. And Melanie, is this yours?
Hello, everybody. My name's Melanie Comer, and I'm the planning intern for the city of Iowa City. Tonight, I will be discussing the proposed rezoning for the parcels at 1810, 1816, and 1828 Lower Muscatine Road. So shown on this slide is a location map for the subject properties, and these properties are bordered on the west by Lower Muscatine Road and to the south by Mall Drive. The subject properties are currently zoned neighborhood public and are surrounded by general industrial uses to the north and the south. To the north, the industrial use is owned by Mid-American, and to the south, the industrial use is owned by Procter &amp; Gamble. To the east and west are primarily low-to-medium-density single-family zones, and further to the south are commercial uses. So for some background context, in 2002, Iowa City initiated a rezoning for the property located at 1828 Lower Muscatine Road to the neighborhood public zone for Kirkwood Community College to expand their campus. However, circumstances have changed, and Kirkwood no longer operates within this facility, putting it up for sale. Procter &amp; Gamble intends to close on this site this year, which, pending the approval of this rezoning, would allow for an extension of the existing Procter &amp; Gamble facility to the south. These properties are currently zoned neighborhood public, or P1, which is intended to provide reference to public ownership and use of land. Some examples of uses allowed within this zone are parks, schools, police and fire stations, and other civic buildings. Since this is a public zone, if these properties are purchased by a private entity, the area must be rezoned to comply with the intended use. The proposed zoning of these properties is general industrial, or I1, which was created to provide the opportunity for the development of most types of industrial firms. Industrial and research zone site development standards apply in this zone. The maximum allowable height is 45 feet, and the minimum setbacks are 20 feet from the front facade and zero feet from the rear end sides. On the right, you can see a category, or use categories table, that denotes some of the uses allowed within this zone, and some examples of building trade. It could be contractor shops. Some examples of industrial service could be machine shops, towing yards, machinery repair shops. Some examples of tylenol light manufacturing could be firms manufacturing electrical components, optical instruments, or lenses. For general manufacturing, which is provisional in this zone, it could be manufacturing of chemicals or food products, and this excludes any heavy manufacturing uses like meatpacking or sawmills or paper mills. Heavy manufacturing uses are only allowed by special exception, which are limited to concrete batch plants in this site. And warehouse and freight movement examples could be wholesale distribution centers, railroad switching yards, warehouses used by retail stores, or vehicle fleet storage. Waste-related uses are limited to recycling process facilities, and some general community service uses could be libraries, museums, or neighborhood centers. So in reviewing rezoning, the city uses two criteria. One is consistency with the comprehensive plan, and the second is compatibility with the existing neighborhood. First, I will get into this request's consistency with the IC 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Shown on the slide is the future land use map with the rezoning area circled in red. In the future land use map, this area is set to be used for public/semi-public use. However, there exist goals and policies that would support a rezoning of this area to general industrial. In the economic development section of the IC 2030 Plan, there is a goal to increase and diversify the property tax base by encouraging the retention and expansion of existing businesses. By rezoning this area to industrial, Procter &amp; Gamble would be able to expand their existing facility to the east, directly aligning with this goal. Similar to the IC 2030 Comprehensive Plan, the Southeast District Plan Future Land Use Map shows this area as public institutional, and there is an objective in the plan to enhance this as commercial development opportunity for Kirkwood Community College. However, circumstances have changed, as I mentioned before, since this plan's adoption in 2011. As Kirkwood no longer operates within this facility, a different zoning designation would be more compatible with adjacent uses. Within the industrial and employment areas section of the Southeast District Plan, it expresses this district as "an ideal place to expand Iowa City's industrial base due to its ideal landscape of level and well-drained land." One goal within this plan is to preserve and expand the industrial tax base. An objective to accomplish this goal is to protect designated industrial areas from incompatible uses, such as residential dwellings and retail and consumer services that would be incompatible with the existing industrial uses to the north and south. A second goal within this plan is to minimize conflicts between industrial areas by developing a better buffer between the residential areas to the north of the Iowa Interstate Railroad and industrial uses to the south. Next, I will get into the compatibility with the existing neighborhood. So to the east and west are primarily low-to-medium-density single-family homes. However, these zones are separated from the existing industrial uses and proposal site by a major thoroughfare to the west, which is Lower Muscatine Road, and a railroad to the east. As mentioned before, land to the north and south of this site is zoned general industrial. So rezoning the site to general industrial would allow for Procter &amp; Gamble to expand the existing facility to the south, making the proposed use consistent with both adjacent properties to the north and south. In this site, there are two current entrances for access in street design. The first entrance is to the north at the intersection of Sycamore Street and Lower Muscatine Road, and to the south, there is an entrance to the property at 1828 Lower Muscatine Road into the existing parking lot. As for correspondence, staff has received 11 emails thus far, and most of the correspondence regards concerns about this proposed rezoning. Concerns relate to issues such as air quality and pollution, noise pollution, and unpleasant scents. All correspondence was provided to you and is available at your seats. Staff recommends approval of rezoning 230010, a proposal to rezone approximately 6.8 acres of property located at 1810, 1816, and 1828 Lower Muscatine Road from neighborhood public zone to general industrial zone. Upon recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing will be scheduled for consideration by City Council. The anticipated timeline would be February 6th. Council sets a public hearing, and February 20th, council public hearing and first consideration.
Anything else, Melanie, or is that it?
I believe that's it.
Two items. First off, just for the purposes of minutes, please note that Commissioner Padron is present for the meeting. And second, Melanie, I noticed that in the agenda, it's listed as 6.1 acres versus 6.8 acres in the attachments in the presentation.
That was my typo. It's 6.8 acres. The agenda is wrong.
Thank you. Now, it's an opportunity for any commissioners to ask questions to staff if they have any. Any commissioners have questions?
How long, when was this zoned originally, commercial? My question is, I think that a lot of times we put "commercial" on the outside or away from the residential, and so I'm thinking originally this was zoned "commercial" a long time ago, or in industrial.
It's been industrial since the '60s. The property, this property, the subject property in question tonight was zoned CC2 prior to 2002, when it was rezoned in neighborhood public.
Okay, so, wow.
Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If the applicant or the applicant's representative would come up to the podium, and this is your opportunity to present. And please sign in, state your name.
Hi, Wade Womery with Shive Hattery, representing Procter &amp; Gamble.
Any questions for him? Do you have any comments you'd like to make to us?
No, right now, I think they're just trying to, Kirkwood's just going to sell it to Procter &amp; Gamble since they're neighbors, and just kind of future expansion for right now. And Joe Townsend's here, if he wants to speak about anything with Procter &amp; Gamble.
Yeah, we just have you present one at a time, so after you. So as far as you know, right now, there are no plans for the property. It's just acquire it since it's adjacent to the existing property?
Correct, with future expansion.
Very good. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And anybody else with the applicant?
Hi, I'm Joe Townsend with Procter &amp; Gamble. Like what was shared before, like, we're just looking to purchase the property with the potential to do a further expansion of our Oral Care operation within Iowa City. We don't currently have existing plans on what we want to do with that property, but we'd like to have the opportunity to potentially expand.
Go ahead, sorry.
With that, like, I'd just like to say, like, I do appreciate you allowing, you know, Procter &amp; Gamble to come here tonight. We've been a member of the community since 1956. During that time, we've tried to be a good, responsible neighbor in the community. Procter &amp; Gamble's current Oral Care operation in that area produces manual toothbrushes and power toothbrushes in that area. We continue to strive to be a good steward of the environment and the community. In the process of doing that, like, we are a zero-waste manufacturing facility, so not trying to put anything-
Could you speak on the microphone, please, because I cannot hear you?
Sorry. Would you like me to start over and kind of go through that? Sure. So again, I'm Joe Townsend with Procter &amp; Gamble here in Iowa City. I'm the site engineering leader. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak to you all. Procter &amp; Gamble has been a member of this community since 1956. During that time, we've, we strive to be a good member of the community. We continue to be a good steward of the community as well as the environment. We have initiatives at our facilities that are zero-manufacturing waste to landfill. We're also in process of achieving our zero greenhouse gas emissions from our plants. Furthermore, we maintain our air operating permits and our stormwater permits. Most recently, we've had some audits from the DNR, as well as RECA inspections in 2019 and 2021, in which we've had zero notice of findings or zero violations that have been identified. So we intend to continue to strive to meet those initiatives and be a good steward within the community, so just wanted to state that.
Currently, there's no plans for that property. You just want to control the property, is that correct?
Correct.
We've received multiple correspondence, and it sounds like some people have gotten the idea that there's chemicals going to be produced there. Is there any basis for that, or do you know where that came from?
There's no chemicals that would be produced there. If we were to expand our Oral Care operation, it'd be primarily within making Oral Care toothbrushes or power toothbrushes, which is not a chemical manufacturing process. It's an injection molding process.
Okay. And you're in compliance with the DNR EPA Air Release Waste Regulations?
Absolutely.
And there's been no findings in the last five years?
From our most recent audits in 2018 and 2021, there were no audits there. We also do internal audits ourselves and do legal compliance audits to make sure that we adhere to and maintain all the legal requirements that we have for Procter &amp; Gamble, as well as the community, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions from anybody else on the commission?
Just a quick question. If I understand-
Chad, could you use your microphone there?
If I understand correct, you also operate out of the old Menards location?
That is correct.
Is that the same process, Oral Care?
For the most part, it's the same. So the Menards facility on the opposite side of town is a power Oral Care toothbrush manufacturing facility. It's a very similar process where we're injection molding parts to assemble components to make toothbrushes, so.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the applicant's team that'd like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead, and this is an opportunity for the public to speak. When you come forward, please come forward, sign in, state your name and your address, and you limit your comments to five minutes. I'll be timing everybody, so you will be held to five minutes. And address your comments to the commission. So anybody that'd like to speak, now's your opportunity.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm not the best multitasker.
That's, you're doing just fine.
All right. I want to, first off, just thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of this-
And your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Austin Kornz. I'm with Greater Iowa City Incorporated. We're the economic development organization for the Iowa City area, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. We just want to quickly state that Greater Iowa City Incorporated is fully supportive of the proposed rezoning of the former Iowa City Kirkwood campus to make way for the purchase and additional space of Procter &amp; Gamble. Procter &amp; Gamble is a cornerstone of the local economy and provides a significant employment base for individuals across the entire region. While the departure of Kirkwood is a loss for the area, PNG's potential acquisition provides a great opportunity for the entire community and makes sense for the location situated directly adjacent to the current PNG facility and between two other, you know, industrial sites. A purchase like this one represents the type of business retention effort needed to ensure PNG can continue their work for years to come. PNG is not only an economic driver for the region, but an incredible community development partner. We at Greater Iowa City are eager to continue working with Procter &amp; Gamble and residents of the surrounding community, which includes my family and me, to maximize how this development could benefit the area and bolster our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the commission?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I'm Anne Marie Kraus. I live on the southeast side of Iowa City, and I'm asking that you do not approve the rezoning of the Kirkwood property. I just heard that there are no current plans to produce chemical products the way they do out on East Highway 6, but once the facility is rezoned for general industrial, that does include opening the door to the, to the manufacture of chemical products. And even if you're producing plastic products like toothbrushes or whatever, all of those things emit strong, noxious, dangerous odors. The essential question is this: Are you willing to trade our property values for Procter &amp; Gamble's profits? On the east side and the southeast side of Iowa City, we are already experienced with the noxious odors from the PNG plant out on Highway 6. The fumes reach a two-mile range, as residents have told me. Now PNG could be emitting more intensely concentrated odors at a close range, and the site is surrounded on all sides by neighborhoods. When the southeast side gets a reputation for bad odors, who will want to buy a home in our area? Consider that if you approve this plan, the property values in our area could plummet, and with lower property values, the city will have a reduced tax base, hence less income for the city. Further, are you willing to trade our health for PNG's corporate profits? Even if they claim that the odors emanating from their chemical manufacturing are not toxic, there are studies that say that they are, such as scientific articles in Springer Link listing toxic or carcinogenic substances contained in scented items such as laundry products. The CDC says that environmental odors make asthma worse. And even if you refute all those studies, chemical sensitivity is a real medical diagnosis, such as mine. The chemical fumes from the PNG plant out on Highway 6 give me migraines, nausea, dizziness, and sometimes worse. And even if you dismiss chemical sensitivity as irrelevant, the noxious fumes will devastate the livability of our sweet, modest neighborhoods. The CDC recommends that people stay indoors to avoid health damage from environmental odors or leave the area. What kind of options are those for those residential victims of chemicals in the air? And we also want to know why the IC 2030 Comprehensive Plan says that the southeast district is an ideal place to expand Iowa City's industrial base. Why always the southeast side? Because that's where the powers that be place nearly all the buildings that are not wanted in other parts of town. Why don't you rezon an area where the homes cost upwards of $500,000? It's always our neighborhood. The southeast side is filled with neighborhoods of modest means and struggling incomes. It's easy for the city to turn their backs on us because we don't have the power and influence that other areas of town can wield. I trust that you value the concept of the quality of life. It's something that we are fortunate to have in Iowa City. Please don't endanger our property values, our health, and our quality of life by rezoning to general industrial. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the commission?
Hello, thank you for having me. Would it be possible to pull up those two diagrams, the diagram one and two that I submitted? It's just the scientific data that I found.
They have them at their seat. I don't have them on the computer here.
Okay, so the people, like, on public television?
And they're actually back there as well, in the pile of late correspondence?
Perfect, okay. All right, thanks again for having me. My name is Tracy Deby. I've lived on H Street, which is right behind Kirkwood Community College, for going on 25 years. I have a background in science and healthcare. I've worked in a genetic research lab, so I understand the smell of chemicals and how to identify them and the toxicity that goes along with it. I'm here because my family and I had trouble breathing the air last year. Everybody in southeast Iowa City can tell you that there's this pervasive smell of hog farms and head and shoulders. Something, you know, last year, we had a lot of wildfires burning from Canada. But last, the last two years have been particularly bad because we've had strong odors of acetone in the air, very concentrated, to the point where you open up your back door, I opened up my back door, and I couldn't breathe, so I closed the house. I stayed inside, and I'm a gardener, so that's a big deal for me. I closed all the windows and the door, and I turned on the AC in June, and I didn't need to for the temperature. But the acetone odor was definitely toxic. I'm kicking myself for not reporting it to the EPA at the time. I kind of was feeling like it wouldn't do any good, and I didn't know there was a way to report it. I thought I had to only report it to the state level, and I know that the state regulators are having difficulty keeping up with everything, especially with the new findings on toxic emissions. So acetone is what we normally think of as nail polish remover. It's extremely toxic if even breathed, inhaled for one hour. The period of time last summer when I experienced the worst of it was like June and July, like, maybe mid-June to mid-July. I had headaches, my family had headaches, we had breathing difficulties, and irritability and fatigue also, which I just found out today after doing some more research on the CDC, are common side effects. Now, one hour of inhalation can cause these ill health, this ill health in people. That's just one hour. We were experiencing it for several weeks. It kind of ebbed and flowed in severity. This is something that I have not seen any data to prove that it came specifically from that, the old Oral Bee plant. However, I did do my own walking around the neighborhood to try to isolate it because it was so bad, and on the lesser days when I could be outside, I found that it was much worse when I was walking up Mall Drive past the Ace Hardware there. You could smell it coming out from that Oral Bee parking lot, or stacks. I hope you have a chance to read the findings that I submitted. I wanted to know, when I, when I heard, when I got the letter, which was just a week ago, I haven't had much time to do this, I wanted to know if there was any correlation between what's been recorded by the EPA and what I experienced. And I did find two, two studies, two published research pages. They're kind of hard to navigate, the EPA website, so on the back of each diagram one and two, I have the links and how to follow the links to get to where I found this information, so that you can find it yourself. So what they say is both Procter &amp; Gamble facilities on the southeast side have been cited as being, having air pollution and toxic releases to air. Toxic releases to air is the more important one, I think, here. You can go to the website and look up all the details of that, but I just wanted to say that there is proof that there are, have been, there is pollution coming from those places. The second thing I found that was even more important to me, I think, is the diagram two, daily air quality values from 2019 to 2024. I printed them out. The areas in green are good air quality index. Areas in yellow, each, each spot, each tile is a day. Areas in yellow are moderate for air quality. Orange is unhealthy for sensitive groups like children, like a twain, or elderly, or disabled, like myself. And then the red stripes are for, they're considered unhealthy. My time's up?
Yep.
I figured it might be. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Tracy. Sir, anyone else would like to present to the commission?
Hi there, my name is Mary Helen Kinnerly. I live at 1017 Fourth Avenue, so just around the corner from Tracy, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I always, I think I share with Anne Marie, a lot of concerns about what happens when we leave residential zoning and go to industrial. It's like, you know, I don't, I don't see us coming back from that, and I think we should treat that with a lot of caution, which I expect you do and really appreciate. And I, I think it's really telling in terms of the caution that should be treated with that PNG's representatives, or the applicant's representatives', first line of defense is "We don't intend to do anything with the property," you know? "We promise. We're, we just want to acquire it and just have it. We're neighbors, you know, they were kind enough to sell it," and it's sort of like the promise is "We won't, we won't do anything with it." But of course, the reality of that new zoning regulation, whether it's them or someone else down the road, is that anything could happen. Anything could happen, and we have to sort of trust in our regulatory agencies and their sort of decreasing strength in the state, that nothing bad will happen to this community, to the community that this guy lives in, and a lot of the rest of us. So I just want to convey how cautious I think we should be going forward and considering a change like this. It's a really big one, and I, I trust that you see it that way, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Helen.
Good evening, Dan Schwer, 1140 Spru-
Good evening, Dan Schwer, 1140 Spruce Street. I'm not going to try to add to any of that, but since they won't say what they want to do, at a minimum, we want some kind of conditional rezoning so that they are not manufacturing in that space directly across the street closer to residential neighborhood. And you're, you now have a barrier. You let them rezone and without restriction manufacture, then you're that much closer across the street, much closer to our residences. That is my concern. I'm just going back to the fairness. They started in 1956. That was pre-existing before a lot of us were there. I didn't complain when I grew up. The trains were there first. We can't complain about that in my book. We can complain if we are there first. We're here first. So they won't say that they're not going to. All I'm asking is if you're not going, if you're going to approve it conditional, they can have a parking lot there if they want, but manufacturing, that's too close to residential. That's basically my argument. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, I'm Jane Driscoll. I live at 1409 Spruce Street. And at the risk of disclosing my age, I have lived in that neighborhood about a block and a half from where the Kirkwood currently is and the property in question for about 45 years of my life. And I would echo the need for conditional zoning. If this moves forward, there's noise pollution, light pollution, there is excess traffic that needs to be looked at. The bus route is right there and has bus stops, and if we have the risk of future semi-traffic or other large vehicles arriving, coming to and from in addition to extra employee traffic, I think all that needs to be looked at and considered in a conditional zoning that goes back to the applicant to protect the interest of the public, but also protect the safety of the public. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else like to address the commission on this application?
Hi, my name is Jessie Wald, and I, like these folks, live quite close to this, what will be rezoned as the former Kirkwood location. I'm on Ginther Avenue. And I just would like to sort of echo their concerns and say that I also, with the information that we have been given, don't support moving forward with this rezoning. I'm incredibly concerned that they don't have specific plans they can give us. I'm also very interested to know what the definition of provisional use for manufacturing, kind of how that would play out if they do in the future have plans for any sort of chemical storage or manufacturing that would look something like what happens at their other facility. And I mention the other facility because like others that live in the neighborhood, I am often very aware of what smells like a synthetic fragrance that emanates from that location. And I'd also like to remind everyone that just because the EPA or other regulatory agencies that are meant to protect us don't classify something as being particularly hazardous, those bodies are oftentimes trying to catch up with the science, and they move very slowly in doing that. And I have a PhD in environmental engineering, so both my fieldwork and my research and my expertise has demonstrated time and time again with a great list of chemicals that we are often not at the forefront of where the science is. So that fragrance specifically really causes concern for me. Like I said, I live quite close to the facility like everyone else here, and I'm really interested in staying in my home. I'd like to raise my family there. So it's just incredibly important that at the very least, we have all of the specific information about what might occur at this facility. And I think even more than that, we should have the opportunity to really determine what goes on very close to our homes where all of us would like to remain and raise our families. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I have 30 seconds just to ask?
First, we have to go through for everybody else for the first time. Is there anybody else who would like to be, who would like to speak? Second call? Seeing no one, now is an opportunity for somebody who's spoken already to speak for up to two minutes, and again, I'll be timing it for two minutes. Please don't repeat what you've already said. If it's new information, then go ahead and give us that. And state your name, please.
My name is Tracy Deby. Thanks for letting me go again. In lieu of deciding against rezoning this, if you're unable to do that tonight, I would ask that you, that we have deferment, hold off on making the decision so we have time to absorb more of the scientific data. I only had a week to look, and I found those two pretty strong articles. Also, neighbors of mine, my next-door neighbor didn't get their letter of announcement until last night, so I think a lot of people are still unaware that this is going on. The last thing is that with the, what was the word, the criteria. So you did a great talk about the criteria and how you think it meets the criteria for rezoning. I would just ask you to remember that the criteria you're talking about is only physical proximity. And we're talking, what everybody here so far has been talking about is what's in the air, and air moves. And so the proximity you need to consider and the mailing that needs to go out needs to be a much wider circle, maybe two miles. I have a friend I met today downtown who said he can smell, he could smell the acetone last summer, and he lives over by City High. So one last thing, oh, on the website, for Neighborhood and Development, the mission statement is we, we work to create community and find solutions that promote healthy neighborhoods and, and a vibrant business community. I would ask that you remember the first part, please don't sacrifice healthy neighborhoods for business. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Tracy. Anybody else would like to speak for a second time for two minutes? Two-minute limitation, second call? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to consider, to discuss this item?
Move approval.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Quellhurst. Susan, since you made the motion, you like to speak first?
Well.
After you can, you can wait till later if you want to. No pressure, that's just.
Well, I made the motion to move it along and have the conversation and come to some form of decision tonight. I do, I have a question of staff, and it is about the history of the air quality and what is the city's role in the air quality?
The city really has no role. We don't regulate environmental pollutants like air pollution. It's all done at the state and federal level.
I, when I first saw this application in my packet that I got, I thought, well, that makes sense to me. I mean, here's this fairly small piece of property. When you're talking about what the use is going to be in between electrical substation and a manufacturing plant, what else is going to go there if we don't do something that's compatible with those two things? So I thought it was a very good application, and I was highly supportive of it. As your comments have come in, you know, it does raise some concern. But the concerns I'm hearing are based on air quality, which I don't see is really material to what the issue is before us tonight. And for that reason, right now, I'm supporting this application.
Scott, would you like your next?
Yeah, I totally agree with that. You know, I empathize with a lot of the concerns that have been raised here today, and I think they're, you know, serious and significant and deserve attention, but I also think that I'm not an environmental engineer, and I have concerns about, you know, myself or the commission, you know, trying to make very complex scientific decisions that we're not really qualified to make. I mean, I think ultimately, the question before us is a pretty simple one, which is whether this particular site property is suited for an industrial use. And like Commissioner Craig said, I think that it is, you know, particularly given the surrounding character of the area with Mid-America on one side and Procter and Gamble on the other. So for that reason, I would support the rezoning.
And I'll go ahead and go next. Anne or Melanie, could you just define, just for the public's justification, what provisional use the definition is?
So a provisional use is a use that's allowed in the zone but requires compliance with additional specific use criteria. For general manufacturing, those, the criteria in the industrial, the general industrial zone is related to milling grains. And so it wouldn't, it wouldn't really, it's just, you know, there's, if the proposed use deals with milling grain, then there's additional standards that need to be met, but only for that specific type of manufacturing.
All right. Am I correct to believe that there have been no site plans submitted with this application? So there's no project associated?
That's true.
With it for us to even discuss?
Yes.
Okay. And to both sides that's currently zoned industrial, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And has any government entity come forward and said they would like to do something with the current P1 zoning?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for staff or discussion?
No, I support this application, and I would like to point out that the chart, the diagram two that was presented to us by Neighbor, the days that are shown red, that's one right here, coincided the days that we had the smoke from the fires. So there's, I think, there's no way to link this data to P and G. So we have to be careful with what is presented to us. Sometimes it's curated too much and narrative.
Thanks for pointing that out. I didn't catch that.
I too, I am in agreement with this proposal, mainly because P and G is there already. The electric company is right there. It's, so it's mostly industrial in that area, any of the malls right across the street. It's not totally a residential area. And it would, I would think that something that could go in there is another industrial
Maggie or Chad?
I, I look at the two criteria that we are to make our decision on, and I, I'm going to support it based on the criteria that we make our decision on. I appreciate the neighbors coming, and I feel for you, but I don't think it's our role. I think it's beyond our role tonight.
Chad?
Anne, I don't want to repeat a lot of things that have already been said. The one question I do have is regarding the setback. So it has a 20-foot setback, but a 45-foot building height, correct, a restriction?
Yes, and the 20-foot is just for the front.
Right. That is a concern of mine. It feels a little heavy on the neighborhood, and it's a little bit inconsistent with the rest of the Oral-B location. And sorry, I'm going to refer to the old Randall's Building, Randall's Grocery across the street.
How old are you, Chad?
You're digging deep there.
I could talk about the Hardee's location as well. But I guess my perspective is I do have a little concern like they've expressed about the air quality and such, but more about the zoning specifics setback. Because Kirkwood feels pretty heavy on the street, and it's like a 20-foot setback there. And I think if we face an industrial building that follows that same setback, it would feel pretty heavy, even though it has a major thoroughfare through there. So that would be one thing that may be a provision or adjustment. But no.
But there is no site plan presented, so we have nothing to discuss as far as potential development of that.
Correct. But, so would that not be part of the rezoning condition that you could do as part of the zoning, or no?
I mean, that would probably be a code amendment that would be appropriate, or, you know, that's more in the realm of amending the code for the industrial zone, I would think.
I actually agree with you on that, that if we look at industrial zoning in the future, we examine the setback regulation.
Maybe not to residential neighborhood.
Well, I don't know. We just need a robust discussion on that. Any further discussion on this? Okay, we have a motion by Craig, a second by Quellhurst. All those in favor of the application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the application is approved seven to zero. Next item up on the agenda is comprehensive plan update. Item number five, introductory presentation by staff on the comprehensive plan update. Anne?
Thanks, Chair. All right, thank you. Anne Russett with Neighborhood and Development Services. I am going to give a brief presentation, an introductory presentation on the comprehensive plan update. I gave this presentation to city council at their work session last night, and also wanted to share this with you. This is kind of the very beginning stages of our update to our comprehensive plan. So during this presentation, I'd like to cover a handful of different items. First, kind of some background on why we got here and why we're working on an update, a high-level overview of what a comprehensive plan is, which I'm sure, I think this group here is very well-versed in what that is, so I'll try to breeze over that, and discuss how it differs from zoning and subdivision regulations, and how the comprehensive plan uses in the land, in the land development process. And finally, some of the outcomes that staff would like to achieve as part of our comprehensive plan update. So one of the reasons staff is moving forward with an update to our comprehensive plan is that it's in the, an action identified in the city council strategic plan. Within the impact area related to neighborhoods and housing, there is a strategy to update the comp plan to encourage complex neighborhoods and diverse housing types and land uses. There's also a specific action item to move forward with the comp plan update between fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '28. And this action item notes that form-based principles, missing-middle housing types, minimum-density requirements, and streamlined approval processes should all be evaluated as part of this effort. Moving on, more about what is the comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan is the guiding document for growth and development within the city. It's non-regulatory. It does help to inform decisions related to the built environment that you guys look at basically every single meeting. A comprehensive plan includes various components. They often include vision statements, goals, and policies related to multiple different policy topics, such as land use, economic development, environment. They include a land use policy map, and they often include an implementation section, which lays out programs and projects that should be implemented to help achieve the vision of the comprehensive plan. vision of the comprehensive plan. The city's comprehensive plan is known as IC 2030. It was adopted in 2013. It includes seven different elements, which are listed on the slide here. And each element includes different goals and strategies for that particular policy area. The plan also formalized the district planning framework, which breaks the city up into 10 different planning districts. And the goal was to adopt, for each of these areas, more specific plans that would provide more specific policy direction for these different geographies. So that's the, that's the map at the bottom right of the screen. Here's the future land use map. You see this map at every rezoning discussion. It identifies the general intended land uses for all the properties within the city, things like residential, commercial, industrial. The future land use map is non-regulatory. It's a conceptual vision for what uses could be allowed, and it should be used in concert with the neighborhood design principles of the plan, as well as the various goals and policies of the plan. The comprehensive plan is also made up of various components. There's the district plans, like the Northeast District Plan. There's master plans, like the Downtown and Riverfront Crossings Master Plan, the Historic Preservation Plan, the City-County Fringe Area Agreement, which provides policy direction for land located within unincorporated Johnson County, but located within two miles of our corporate limits. And all of these plans and policy documents make up the city's comprehensive plan. So while the comprehensive plan provides the conceptual vision for growth and development, the zoning and subdivision regulations are the regulatory tools that can be used to implement the vision of the plan. So in terms of zoning, we have the zoning map, which is shown here, and then the text of the code. I think you are all pretty familiar with this. You look at zoning maps as part of rezonings. You see text amendments to the plan. You recently saw the text amendment for the reduction in height for the RNS-12 zone, for example. So I think, I think you're pretty well-versed on the difference between the zoning map and the zoning code. And then further, the subdivision code. This outlines provisions for the creation of a subdivision drawing or a plat. The commission reviews preliminary plats. And these drawings show the precise location of streets, lots, easements, and other elements that are important to the transfer of property. Unlike zoning regulations, which outline the standards for private property, subdivision regulations deal with the public realm. So the width of the public right-of-way, the pavement width of the street, the sidewalk width, even the length of a block in subdivisions. So in terms of the land development process, the comprehensive plan is used in the review of legislative land use approvals. This is, this is the sole purpose of this commission, reviewing annexations, rezonings, And I think most often, rezonings seem to be the most common type of legislative approvals that require consistency with the comp plan. And the future land use map provides a guide for what zoning classifications could be applied. However, there is some flexibility, as it is a non-regulatory plan. And again, the map designation should be used with the goals and policies of the plan. So next, I'd like to go over some of the outcomes that we'd like to achieve as part of this comprehensive plan update. The first is a new plan that places equity, climate change, and resiliency in housing at its core, and addresses existing disparities, and prepares the city for the future. The Planning and Zoning Commission recently recommended approval of, and the city council adopted, several zoning code amendments related to help improve housing choice and supply. And these, these amendments were focused on increasing the supply of housing. Staff saw these amendments as incremental and conservative changes that were amendments that aligned with the existing policy direction of the comprehensive plan. A new vision is needed to further address ongoing housing issues and address some of the actions in the council's strategic plan, such as missing middle housing, minimum density requirements, and streamlined approvals. Next is a public process that uses varied methods of engagement to drive participation that is more reflective of the city's demographics, and ensures underrepresented groups are actively engaged in the process. At this point, we don't know what that looks like, and we don't have details on what our engagement plan would be. As part of the scope of work that we're working on to include in request for proposals when we're trying to secure a consultant, one of the items in the scope of work is the preparation of an engagement plan that would lay out some more details. We want this engagement plan to be flexible, so if it's not working, and if we're not getting the people that we want to, to the table, we can, we can modify our approach. Next is updated analyses. Regional housing needs assessment, evaluation of current land use policy, as well as other analyses that will allow us to better understand changing needs, trends, and demographics. The regional housing needs assessment will provide a regional understanding of the number of housing units needed, as well as the types of housing that is needed to meet existing and future demand. The assessment will look at specific populations, such as the unhoused, immigrants, persons with disabilities. We also want to evaluate our current land use policy. It will allow us to compare what our plans allow now, and compare that to the needs that exist in our community based on the needs assessment, in terms of housing, in terms of job growth. And comparing the, the existing land use policy with the housing and growth projections, we'll be able to kind of identify the policy changes that need to be made. The fourth outcome is a clear connection between the comp plan and the city's other planning documents. We have a lot of plans. We have the Capital Improvement Plan, Climate Action Plan, Bicycle Master Plan, Strategic Plan, there are others. The comprehensive plan really functions as the overarching policy document, and we want to be able to reference these other documents and other visions and goals in these other plans as needed, and kind of link, create a link between the comprehensive plan and those other documents. The fifth outcome is a new planning framework that identifies specific typologies unique enough to warrant further planning efforts. Examples include community nodes, centers, corridors, employment centers, and others. I mentioned earlier that the comprehensive plan includes 10 planning different districts, which are shown here on this map. And there's also the Downtown and Riverfront Crossings Master Plan, and that area is identified in white on the map. And that, the Riverfront Crossings Plan actually covers three different planning districts. So it includes a portion of the Southwest Planning District, Central Planning District, and a portion of the Downtown District. And the, the goal with this planning district framework is that the city would adopt district plans for all 10 planning areas. But there, there is no planning, there is no planning document for the Northwest Planning District, the North Corridor, or a portion of the Downtown. And these are shown here on the map in gray. And so staff would like to see the existing planning framework reevaluated for several reasons. First, as I already mentioned, some areas aren't covered by adopted district plans. Some district plans are old and no longer reflective of city goals, market conditions, and best practices. And also, creating and regularly updating 10 district plans is, is just not feasible. That's why we are in a position right now where we have certain areas that don't have district plans, and certain plans that are decades old. Additionally, many of these areas are not unique enough to warrant different planning documents. Many of the policies contained within the current documents are policies expressed throughout all of the plans, including the IC 2030 comp plan. So at this point, staff would recommend either reducing the number of planning districts or removing them entirely. Policies unique to certain planning districts could be incorporated into the overall comprehensive plan update. And a new framework could be developed to identify the areas that are really in need of more specific planning efforts.
And Ann, how about, how about sub-district plans? It seems like we have a lot of those, too. Is it gonna address getting rid of our, or combining some of those sub-district plans?
What, what do you mean by sub-district plans?
Like in the Riverfront Crossings?
Oh.
Maybe I'm not using the right word, but I think I am.
So there are those.
Oh, those plans.
So within Riverfront Crossings, there's different kind of sub-areas that correspond to specific zoning designations, like.
It just seems to me like.
South Downtown.
Yeah.
Central Planning, West Riverfront.
Those are.
Park District.
Those are actual ordinances, though. I mean, that's the zoning code. That's not a comp plan structure.
Yeah, it started with the plan, but then we adopted the form-based zone that applies those, that same kind of nomenclature.
Just seems like we're too granular, and we get locked into the granularity, whereas if we could be more general, we wouldn't have those problems.
The sixth outcome is that we'd like an updated future land use map with land use designations that include descriptions of general intended land uses, as well as physical characteristics of the envisioned built environment. And there are a few reasons we want an updated future land use map. Probably one of the most important reasons we need a future, an updated future land use map is that we need to be able to accommodate our anticipated growth and housing needs for our population. In addition to that, another issue that we face with the district planning framework is that each district plan has a future land use map. They have different land use categories. They have different land use descriptions. And there's no consistent naming convention for the various land use designations. So with an update, we'd like to create a consistent list of land use designations and associated descriptions. And we think that's something that's pretty easy to fix, and it would just provide clarity and consistency between the plans. And then lastly, an implementation program that identifies specific actions that should be pursued to implement the vision of the plan. At a minimum, I think one implementation action that would be included in there is an update to our zoning code. That's also included in the city council's strategic plan as something that they would like to see us move forward with. So, and in terms of next steps, we're, we're currently working on drafting the scope of work. We hope to issue an RFP later this winter or in the spring. We would take that contract to the city council this summer, and once we get a consultant on board, we can start work. And we anticipate that the whole update process will take between a year and 18 months. So that's, that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just want to share a thought. I completely agree and strongly support consolidating the 10 planning districts into some smaller number. I've been on here for nine years, and some of the plans are pretty hopelessly out of date. And either consolidate them or have the consultant update them. It's gotta be one or the other. Doesn't do any good to have plans that are not current.
Is there anything that we've talked about, you know, like, we should do this, or that would, we should speak up now and say, think of this when you're, when you're doing this, this update? I mean, I think, we've talked about housing a lot, but we've also talked about.
One thing that comes to mind is that, the, in housing developments, when there's property that's owned by the housing association, association that's, and how it's maintained. That is something that I think has come up multiple times while I've been on.
Yeah, I'd say exactly frequently, because they get planted, and then most of them die, and then nothing ever happens. And then for the water detention areas, they just turn into a morass of volunteer trees. And I, I don't want to add regulations, but it seems like if we at least had a requirement that they plant that into prairie to start with, then prairie, you don't have to do anything with, except maybe once every five years, burn it or mow it or something. I mean, why not just plan for the fact that they're not going to do anything with it? Just acknowledge the reality, these HOAs mostly don't want to maintain these areas, and make it so they're more durable.
And, you know, when we talk about equity and diversity in housing, I get caught up sometimes with these, these, I don't like to use that word because it sounds pejorative, but I don't mean that. But neighborhoods develop in a certain way, and, and, you know, we, we deal with older neighborhoods who are trying to preserve their integrity, and then we also deal with brand-new neighborhoods. And it feels like they both, I'm thinking about the one on the corner, the new one that's, that's in process on the corner of Scott and Rochester. And, and I think it's gonna look like a traditional residential neighborhood. And, and it's their land, and they're developing it, and they're saying, this is what people want to buy, and we're in the business to build houses and make money, which I absolutely understand. It's not government housing. It's, you know, they're building for the market that they see. But how do we inject some, some diversity and housing into, you know, 50 or 60 acres that are being developed as residential housing? That, where it just becomes like, oh, this is what neighborhoods are like in Iowa City, instead of acres and acres of, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if I articulated that very well, but.
No, I, I think I understand what you're, you're talking about, and there are ways that, there's ways to deal with that at the planning stage. So that's something that we'll definitely be exploring.
One issue that we talk about all the time is the, the screening, especially S3 screening. It seems like that needs to be a little more diverse to, because right now, I think the underregulation is 50% conifers, and they have to be five to seven or 10 feet, I can't remember anymore, but.
They're all squished down to about three feet right now.
Yeah. And, and the other thing is, I think we're a tree city, USA, aren't we? Don't we have signs up to say that?
I've seen signs, I think.
It seems like we need to have more input from our city forester, especially in light of the Emerald Ash Bore pandemic, epidemic, whatever you call it, to make sure that we don't lose all our trees at once in the future. You know, if we start now, that will help us. And then it also helps us to have a cooler city when we put more emphasis on trees over maybe some other things, but also not to forget about, and of pollinators. Like if we require planting, let's require plantings that have an environmental purpose, that they're pollinators, rather than just some kind of non, plants that aren't attractive to pollinators. So little tiny things, but if we do it now, 20 years from now, people will be thankful that it happened. So those are, is there, there's stuff we've talked about over the years that we always say we want to do something about, but we forget to do anything about it?
I think what I was thinking of is what Susan brought up. Yeah.
And, and I will say, as part of that engagement plan that the consultant is going to be preparing, it's going to include ways to include the commission and the council in the process. So we'll, you'll be involved.
And I'm assuming, and, and just saying, I think it's a good idea that, you know, when you do, I assume there'll be focus groups and things, that you bring developers in and say, what works for you and Iowa City and what doesn't? And, and, you know?
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna have to be one of the stakeholder groups.
Sure.
It's, it's gonna, it's gonna include everybody. Yeah.
But, I mean, I think you need to hear, this is, and I, and I would guess they, this is the easiest thing for us that makes us the most money, just like Ford wants to build big trucks, because that's where they make the most money. I mean, we have to somehow incentivize.
Yeah.
Not doing it just the way you've always done it.
Right. We, we were in Fort Collins, Colorado, I think, that last spring. It seems like it was longer ago than that now, but we got a tour, we met planners. In their comprehensive plan, they incorporate things like minimum density requirements and diversity mixes. So for, I think it would, like, that's a way to address what you guys are thinking about, to ensure that when we get larger subdivisions of like 50, 60 acres or even less than that, that there has to be a mix, and there has to be minimum density requirements that are met. So that's, that's one way, one example from another city.
And for the rec.
And for the record, when we talk about affordable housing, it's still, the formula that's used needs to be looked at, because a family of four, $90,000 is not affordable. And when you look at that, it's, doesn't seem that we could use that as a, okay, so this group of housing is affordable, when we all know it's not. So I think that formula needs to be looked at again.
Any other input right now? Sorry for coming up with all those ideas.
No, that's great.
But I'm just trying to think about, if we could all try to do this, the stuff we've talked through, about through the years. Because other than the city council, we probably think about this more than anybody else on a citywide basis, excluding you guys, of course, but citizen-wise. And so I just want to make sure that we put our two cents in.
The one thing that came up recently for me is the historic overlay, and trying to review the residential stability, and the change in height, and then also the historic overlay on top of it. It seemed like it kind of stacked on top of each other, as far as trying to sift through, understanding the code requirements and such. So hopefully, this consolidation or cleanup effort.
Thank you for bringing that up. University Impact Zone.
I knew that.
I just think that, that map has not been updated, and I look at the lines, and I, they're just not accurate anymore for the direct impact of the university on the housing stock. So it seems to me that should be included in for the consultant to look at, to come up with a, a good definition based on data for what the university impact zone is, so that when we explain it to people, we actually have an explanation to give to them. So.
Well, and I've always thought the university impact zone is the entire city. I mean, because if the students want and, and can find places to live within walking distance of campus, it affects everybody. I mean, it's, you know, I don't know if you can rename it something, but the impact of the university student population affects the whole city.
Well, the impact of the students is the highest priced.
Particularly the east side.
Residential property in the state of Iowa, in Iowa City. That's the impact. So, anyway. Anything else?
No.
All right. Thanks, Ann. Sorry.
Thank you.
Are you done with your presentation?
Yeah, I am done.
Item number six, consideration of meeting minutes from December 20th, 2023. Does anybody have any major additions or corrections to those minutes?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Townsend. Discussion, motion to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Hearing no nays, motion is approved seven to zero. Number seven, planning and zoning information. Ann?
Two items. At the city council's meeting last night, they approved the height reduction in the RNS 12 zone to 27 feet for single-family and duplex uses. And the Oaknells rezoning at 1201 West Benton Street was approved.
Good. I have one thing, just a reminder to everybody, that our next meeting will be electing officers for the upcoming year. So if anybody's interesting is serving as an officer, please make it known so that we can consider it and have your name put into nomination. I'm on my ninth year. I think I've been chair for five or six.
And you do such an excellent job.
But I don't, but I don't think I want to be chair next year. I, I'm chairman of the Iowa Donor Network, quarter directors for two years, and it's really time-consuming. And I think it's time for you to hand off the baton to somebody else. So if somebody would please come forward for next meeting, that they would like to be chair, that would be appreciated. So we need chair, vice chair, and secretary. We'll be voting for all three. And do we put that at the end of the agenda, so we don't have the, the weirdness of changing who's running the meeting? Makes no difference to me.
Yeah, we can put it at the end.
Just seems smoother that way.
There's a secretary?
Well, by our rules, the secretary is the person who's actually supposed to approve and present the minutes, but we don't actually do that. We probably should get back to that. I'm not sure how to do that, or if it's completely necessary, but it's in our rules. And also, it's a person to run the meeting if the chair and the vice chair are not here.
Oh.
So those are really the two roles of the secretary.
Who's the secretary this year? Billy? All right.
I do so much work.
She's exhausted from it.
So our annual year starts in March?
Well, but it's just by our bylaws that we vote for the meeting, vote for the officers in the first meeting in February, or the nearest meeting that's convenient after that, if we forget, which we've had in the past.
Well, you can vote for them, and they cannot take office until the first of July.
No, they take.
Office immediately. Yeah.
Okay.
If there's anybody interested in running for office, please make sure we know by next meeting, so we can nominate you for that. So be thinking about it, folks. Anything else for planning and zoning information? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend is our second.
Second, Elliott.
Second by Elliott. Discussion. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, we're adjourned. Thank you, folks.